Can you hear me? Okay, didn't turn green for me. It just turned off. Sounds like it's working though. Okay, um, it's six thirty. Um, welcome to uh tonight's uh Park Township zoning board of appeals meeting. We have um few items on our list tonight, but we'll start first off with our agenda and I'm looking for a motion to approve. Uh, tonight's agenda, although there is one thing I probably should say first that we just talked about is if anyone is here. Uh, the hearing number three for twenty one seventeen Richardson. Uh, that has been withdrawn, so I don't know if anybody is here to discuss that, but just letting everybody know. If that is something you're here for, we won't be discussing that. That uh has been withdrawn. So we will not be discussing public hearing number three on our agenda tonight. Outside of that, I guess I'll look for an approval.
A motion to approve the agenda.
Motion. Okay, agenda approved.
Just so that I'm there, are we, is it a motion to approve it as amended, but to remove item number six?
That would be correct, sorry.
Mister, Mister Chair, would you like to take a vote on that? You had the motion in a second, but.
Okay, yeah, we can absolutely take a vote. We'll do a roll call on that. Can we have a roll call on that uh motion? Yeah, no problem.
Mister E.
Yes.
Yes. This Morgan, yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, motion. Root, um, so we'll move on to again now the uh approval of our last ZDA meeting minutes. For February five, I don't know if anybody's got any comments on that. I had, I had one. On page number one, where uh the approval of the minutes where I made a comment. Um, for number one, instead of either, it just should say it. Should say neither in motion number one, instead of his. That was my own way to catch.
Mister Chair, I just noted a few minor um grammatical or spelling changes as well. On page one, under approval of agenda. Mister Cerns first named this Miss Spine, so that she approved it. On page two, um. Approximately two thirds of the way down, there's a sentence or paragraph that says, the rightest stated, it will affect. The view of the neighbor to the west. And then it goes on to say at the end of the sentence. Not they homes are even, and I believe that should read now their homes are even. And then finally, on page two, under paragraph number one at the bottom. I don't know, the paragraph reads, the sentence begins, the entirety of the existing wall link is the standard is remaining, so the, I believe the. Is the standard should just be omitted. That was just a clerical error there.
Agreed. If there was one additional I had on page three, actually, I don't know, I'm finding it. On page three, um, about third of the way down on number one there, um, the response, starting the existing structure is already. At the very, the last sentence of that, it says, um, a second last sentence. Strict compliance would require demolition of the entire existing structure. It should be, and would bring implications to more than the cost of design. And outside of that, I think number, page four, I just was wondering whether there was still a highlight. I don't know if that was a question for the time. That the public discussion opened.
I think I just forgot to remove it after viewing it.
That's the only thing I noticed outside of that. And maybe one more, page five, since I keep looking, sorry. Uh, before, uh, on the, in the left uh edge of the sheet, there's just a UE. I'm not sure what that is. That bold UE on the left above the next meeting. Maybe that just needs to be removed.
Yeah, let's just remove that.
It looks like it might be a public comment made on the agenda.
Yeah, I think you're right.
Yep.
Replace with public comment somewhere.
Yeah, they had it. Replace with public comment. Okay, can I get a motion to approve with amended comments?
So.
Yeah, support. We need to vote on that then. There we go. So we're, we'll move on. So all, oh, sorry, all in favor, yes?
Yes.
Yes. Motion moves. Forward. So uh with that, I guess we will, uh, we can jump right into uh our first public hearing number one tonight. I guess Mika, would you be able to?
Be glad to. So uh your first application tonight is um thirty nine seventy five Lake Ridge. Uh, this is a parcel that um is, it's a Butts Lake, Michigan, uh, has kind of an odd shape. It's got kind of a. It's a twenty foot wide finger reaching out towards the lake uh in the R two zoning district. The application is for, there's a walkway that's being built all the way from the house uh out to the lake. In that twenty foot section with required twenty foot setbacks, there isn't any area that would be left that you could build something in there, such as a decker walkway. Now, if a decker walkway is under thirty inches tall, it's exempt from setback requirements. It can be in the setback. When the building inspector went out there, discovered that it's over thirty inches in certain areas, at least according to the building code, there can be a little bit of variation. In how building and zoning measure that thirty inches. He's requiring a railing out there, which means that it's no longer exempt from that setback requirement. So uh the applicant is asking for a, the ability to put a railing on this walkway. Um, I know in the communications, there were some question about Eagle and Eagle permits. I talked to Mister Martin about that this afternoon, just kind of touched base as far as. Where does our responsibility lie? So anytime we get an application, I go through and see what permits do we need from outside agencies? Road commission, uh, water resources commission, Eagle, uh, anytime I find something that's another agency requires. Uh, I ask for that permit ahead of time. So in this case, Eagle allows certain activities within a critical dune area. It's an exemption called a non-use. So they basically say this is not a use. Under the, of, under the section that requires permits for certain uses. So there are some exemptions that come in there if it's. Uh, hand dug post holes, no roof on the deck, or, or the, the stairs or the structure. Decks do typically need one, but not walkways, boardwalks, uh, or stairs with hand dug tools. I didn't see anything in the application that made me think that that was required. Um, there is a question about sand movement. That's one of the requirements for this exemption. Once we're getting to the point of evaluating whether something uh meets a sand movement requirement, it's a little outside of where I'm comfortable making a call. So I did put a call into Eagle just to say, hey, how would you like to proceed? You know, what, what, what's your preferred way to view this? Um, but when I talked to Mister Martin, he said. Yes, if an Eagle permit is required, then you know, that's, that's on Eagle. We. Cooperate with them, but the township is responsible for looking at the township regulations. So um if you wanted to take that into consideration, you could condition it upon either the Eagle permit or no, no permit needed. Um, communication from Eagle, uh, but that, that part is at your discretion. You're primarily looking at the zoning. So, open to any questions on that. I know the Eagle stuff gets a little bit complicated.
So, so has there been communication with Eagle from the owner about?
I think that the, so when the owner is, speaks to that, I think that they did communicate with Eagle. I didn't communicate with Eagle. On this application prior to that, and so I have a call into them. I haven't heard that. I think they may.
Okay, great. Thanks, Mika. Uh, at this point, I guess I will open, uh, open up the topic for public discussion. If there's anyone in the room. Who wants to speak in favor or against this, I guess I will welcome you to the podium. So not your name, write your name, your address, please, down for us if you could.
I'm right, right here.
Oh, yeah, sir.
Uh, I'm Roger Price. I'm the owner, and I'll speak to what we did with, with Eagle once I sign here. Okay, so um my wife and I have owned this land for twenty seven years, and we've always thought it'd be great. One day to be able to put a boardwalk out to the lake, and so we've saved our pennies and we're old enough now to where we can actually afford to do that. We have a son and his um wife and two grand, our two grandkids in town right here, and so for them to be able to use it and for us to be able to use it. I also like climbing stairs as exercise. So anyway, we're excited to be able to do this. Um, before we started, I, I wrote to Eagle. And I wish I had brought that email. I think I forwarded that to you at one point to remember who I spoke with, but. Uh, she said, based on what you've described, you don't need a permit, and so that had to do with how wide this was going to be and. Those kinds of things, and I think they like it when you protect the dune from us walking on it type of thing. So. I did, Mika, when we, when I came here, you said, hey, we need to know if Eagle, and so I forwarded that to you. Do you have access to that or no? Okay, and, and you said, yep, looks like we're good. Now, again, maybe there's other questions that need to be answered after the fact, but. Based on what I described to them, they said, we don't need anything past that to Mika, and she said, nope, we don't. And then um Chad started to work with uh the two, two gentlemen and their crew that were building it. They've been amazing. And so that's kind of uh what we're doing, and my understanding of where we are. Again, it's this section, it's, it's a, guys, do you know how long the boardwalk is total?
The boardwalk total is close to the five hundred feet.
Yeah, so it's, it's a long, it looks like a park, basically. Um, but there's a, there's a section, do you know how long that section is?
It's about a sixty foot section.
That, that um.
Going through the, the twenty foot wide portion of the line.
Yeah, so, so ten foot setbacks, you can't, you know, with a, yeah, so anyway, it's in that section. That because of the slope of the dune, we misunderstood how to measure how far down it is, and Chad said, no, you're gonna need a railing here. And so that's why we're here today is to see if we can get that railing. Uh, to make sure that uh we meet code on, on probably more the safety side of things, so.
Great.
Anyway, I don't know if I take questions or that I just, just make a statement.
Yep, any, any questions you have.
Anybody have questions for the board, for the applicant?
If the applicant could just tell us why you need the variance, is it because you couldn't put it in an area that?
Yeah, so, so our, our property is, I don't know, maybe sixty feet wide for most of it. But as you get out near the lake, it goes down to twenty feet wide. And, and so it's in that twenty foot section that if you put anything in there and you have ten foot setbacks. You're not going to be able to have a ten foot setback. And so where there is no railing. Mika was just describing that there's an exemption. You don't need setbacks if it's just flat boardwalk. But in this, for sixty feet, we do need a railing just on one side, and so that's the, that's why we need a variance. So does that answer your question, Dennis? Okay, great.
The one question I do have is, in the um application materials you provided, there was this picture of the stair with a red marker. Markup for the handrail, it looks like where it goes, but is that, so it looks like that's on the up. But on the plan, as I thought it was, was flat, is that, is there flat areas too that require the railing?
Flat areas, so you're now getting a little bit of a grade there, so it's like, there's like two steps, and then you'll have like a ten foot. To twelve foot walkway, and then a couple of steps up, and then you go from there, and then you actually start going downgrade after you reach the. The top of that hill. The difficulty with that, that, that portion was that since it's on a grade like that. And the Eagle W R D zero zero eight uh requires uh only hand tools and only a certain amount of sand moved. So in order to get that walkway low enough, so that it wasn't thirty inch or was less than thirty inches off the north side of the walkway. We would have been a big too much, uh, which would have been not in compliance with, with Eagle standards.
You would have undermined the dune.
Correct.
On one side or something, right, yeah.
This motion that we understand to refer to a railing on one side of the walkway.
Correct, so um the dune coming on the left side, if I'm walking out toward the lake, it's like, that's not an issue. But it's on the, on the north side, as it goes down, all of a sudden, that's, that's off, you know, you could fall off type of thing, so that's where the railing is required.
Really, or is there a less?
Yeah, I, I think that railing was somewhat Chad kind of.
Pretty much the, the, yeah, least intrusive railing that Chad would allow on the rest of that build. So where you see that railing stop is right where that lot goes from the sixty feet to the twenty feet.
And speaking of terms of design, so when I say intrusive, I don't mean on the negative way, just being. You know, the, the board on the side or width of the wood itself, that's weird and visible. Is there a way to reduce? The visual impact of the railing and still comply with code?
Um, the, the top board or the, the middle board or what?
Do you want him on the microphone or doesn't it matter?
If you could, that'd be good so we could hear you.
Yeah.
And, and it's, it's.
Yeah, so. Correct. Yep, yep. Yeah, right. Right.
Yeah, yeah, unfortunately, I don't think so. Um, you have to, um, talking with Chad, we have to do. The top rail, and then we have to have a middle kneeboard, which is the one I think you're looking at, that's right in the middle. And then also a lower kneeboard, and then for support underneath the top rail, we need, we still need to have a two by four underneath that. Okay, yeah. Yeah, that would be three, three and a half inches.
Was, was there, oh.
Yes, oh, yes. My name is James Rupp, and I'm with Waterfront Solutions.
Excellent. Yeah, you can write that down. That'd be great.
I noticed on the one side, there's a metal pipe railing. Is, was that just for part of it, for extra safety?
Yeah, so um I remember when, when James and Will and the crew were trying to figure out what's the least obstructive and then gives us the most area, and so we did this. But, but Chad said, no, we need this.
Yeah.
So we ended up with uh, yeah.
Yeah, that's a, that's a grassable handrail, uh, which you have to have on the, on the stair sections for, for code there.
Correct, I was just gonna clear that up for everybody. There's a difference from a guardrail to a grassable handrail if you have over so many riders.
Correct.
You need that.
Yep, and uh actually in that seventy or sixty, seventy foot portion, there is, there's no. More than three steps before a ten foot walkway, so we wouldn't actually need um the grassable rail on, on any of that portion of the build too. So I guess it's, in essence, a, a little bit less obstructive than, than some of the other um areas on the build.
Was there, was there any thought to maybe change that materiality up, instead of using wood, could you use metal? To allow some, you know, thinner profile elements? I'm just thinking ahead of what we're probably gonna be faced with talking about.
Yeah.
You know, trying to help out here, but um, has that been a consideration?
Um, that has not been a consideration, uh, mostly due to cost um of a metal or aluminum railing. And um it also takes up a little bit more space to see if we go with a top mount. Um, but yeah, the, the main thing there would be, would be costs of, of an aluminum railing in that section.
Any other questions for the board? Mister Price, do you have any additional comments for anything you wanted to add? Okay. Thanks, you guys.
Yeah, and I, I will just say back to the Eagle thing a little bit, so I have the. I have the W R D zero zero eight printed out here, if any of you would like to look at that as well. Um, and basically, and this kind of goes along with the email that Roger got from the representative over at Eagle. If uh, if the structure is less than five feet wide, um, it doesn't need a permit. Um, and that as long as, like we already talked about too, is using the, using the hand tools, um. And not being obstructive, the dune, uh, by not, you know, digging down and, and all the rest, so.
Did I clarify? So yeah, to, to that point, I guess the width of the walkway is forty inches, is that what I read?
Uh, the width of the walkway is forty inches, correct.
Okay, so it's under that requirement Eagle would say, or kick in.
Yes.
Requirements, okay. Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, set there, thanks. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak for or against the? This? All right, seeing none, closed public discussion on public hearing number one. And uh open it up to more discussion. There's more things we need to. Kind of talk about ourselves, but it's uh. The things I had on my, in my mind are things that. Uh, this Morgan was alluding to is aesthetics of how it looks, and I know we have one, uh, actually, no, we had. Two letters, I believe, on this one, is that correct? And uh, they both were against. Was that true?
Yeah, one was against and one was more of a question.
More of a question. Okay. Yeah, one was from the, the neighbor, um, concerned about use from the deck or from the boardwalk into the home, and which, understandable.
I guess to respond to that concern that was raised by the neighbor, um. My opinion of that is that the, this applicant does have the right to utilize this property, so whether there's a walkway there or not. Him, his family, guests could traverse that area swiftly, I suppose, if they wanted to. So while I understand the privacy concern, uh, I don't, we don't see that as a basis to deny the request. Um, I also. Understand that a walkway is allowed in this area, um, and that really the only issue before us is, is the railing. As a practical matter, if the railing's not allowed, it sounds like that portion of the walkway isn't allowed, and. Um, you know, does that then achieve the goals of our zoning, which. I mean, we certainly look at things, try to balance the property interests, but we also look at the purpose, which is also in part to, you know. Preserve natural resources and um. So it's, it's not a, a clean, it's not a clean case in the sense that, you know, we do have some opposition to it, but. I think on balance, when I review. Um, the facts of this, the way the properties are situated, the limitations posed by the topography of this property and the location in the critical dune area. Um, I tend to lean toward approving the railing. I would, my personal preference would be to see something less visually obstructive, but I also understand that we're not in a position to grant a variance from the building code. And if the building inspector is telling them, this is what you need to have, then I accept that.
Right, yeah, we have no jurisdiction on trying to make it look different.
Correct.
As long as it implies with loading and heights and. So I guess we, is there anyone else? I guess at this point, maybe, I don't know if there's. A motion to, we're looking at section thirty eight seventy for the review.
Uh, I believe so, yeah, there are the four standards for review, yeah.
I'm looking for a motion to either approve or denounce.
I would make a motion to re-approve the variance. And uh, with regard to the standards for section thirty eight seventy. The first being that strict compliance with the zoning ordinance regulating the minimum area, yard setbacks. Front edge height, oak density, or other regulation would render conformity with those restrictions of the zoning ordinance unnecessary emergency. And based on staff's comments, um, I think the standard can be met, and is met. Second standard, that granting the requested variance would do substantial justice to the applicant. As well as to other property owners in the zoning district. If a lesser relaxation were applied, would give substantial relief to the property owner, would be more consistent with the justice. To the other property owners in the district, the Board of Appeals may grant a lesser variance, provided the other standards are met. With regard to this standard, would agree with staff comments. Uh, that the reasonable expectation of those with property fronting the lake is typical. Will enjoy the access to the lake by granting a variance, that this standard can be met.
I would add just that, without damaging the dunes as a result of additional foot traffic that the boardwalk offers.
Exactly. The next standard would be that the plight of the property owner. Uh, is due to the unique circumstances of the property. Uh, and the odd shape or natural feature like the stream or what land would do to the general conditions of the zoning district. And as the applicant shared with us, uh, the steep incline of the dune. Uh, would require that on the exposed side, that we have a railing. Uh, the grade of the dunes and the fragility of the ecosystem. Would be satisfactory to, in order to meet the standard, so that can be, uh, met as well. And finally, the practical difficulties alleged are not self-created. And I would agree again with staff comments. Um. That the difficulty is the terrain in combination with both state and township recognitions.
We have a motion to support.
Support.
Okay. We'll have a roll call on this. You would?
Mister E.
Yes.
Yes.
That's a morning.
Yes. Mister Cern.
Yes.
Yes. All right, motion approved. Various granted. Okay. We'll move on to uh hearing number two. Mika, would you? Provide that for us?
Okay, so this is a request to cover a patio slash deck area uh with a roof. Uh, the setback for that area is fifty feet, according to the zoning code. Um, once backyard, rear yard averaging is taken into account. Um, once backyard rear yard averaging is taken into account, it's actually um thirty-four feet is going to be what's required there. Um, they would like to bring that covered patio area to twenty-five feet from the rear setbacks. Um, we did not receive any correspondence for this request. Um, if you were to decide to move towards approval, uh, staff would recommend. Imposing some conditions that would be more specific to this structure. As opposed to completely changing the rear setback for any structure for life. Um, that's of course at your discretion, um, and there are four standards of approval for this application.
So what you're encouraging, Mika, right there was just the fact that if we allow something to happen like this, that that would establish a new setback. For and in addition to occur or something.
Yeah, exactly. So if you change the setback, then, you know, if you just say, yes, rear setback now twenty-five feet, you know, they could build a thirty-five. Well, probably not thirty-five, but they could build a full structure up to that, that new rear setback line.
Yeah, okay. Great, thank you. Uh, with that, um, I guess we'll open it to public discussion on public here number two. If anyone is in the audience, that the applicant available tonight. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak for or against this item? Okay, I don't think we had letters from the public on this one at all either, but. I will close public discussion and move on to more discussion.
Mr. Chair, I have a question, I think, for Mika, um, since the applicant is not present. Has there been any discussion with the applicant about any proposed conditions? Or I'm hesitant to. I I agree that with this type of a request, we would normally impose some kinds of conditions. But I'm hesitant to do that without them here and hearing what their plans are, um. So I'm not sure.
Yeah, I had corresponded with them briefly, not in depth.
Okay.
Um.
Did we expect them to be here tonight?
Yeah, but I mean, so normally at some point that is communicated, and I don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know.
Okay.
About that, so I I didn't hear from them either way on that, um.
I have a question just from the picture, is that a smooth back with a little roof on it?
Yeah, I'm trying to remember what it looks like, I I can pull the pictures off.
In there, yeah, and their application picture, it looks like a little bit of a bay window.
And they want to build.
Yeah.
They want to build it with posts and a concrete, so would it be enhanced?
No, it would not, it would not be enclosed, um, it would just be a permanent roof structure as opposed to them.
So they're not just asking to build a road and a patio, but it's attached to the house.
Right, the roof would be attached to the house, yeah, it would have to be.
Take this roof off.
Yeah.
It did, it was like to me, it's it's just a roof with a couple columns, there's no way planned for enclosing in it.
No, not 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 from anything in the plans.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, it's if if you would prefer to um hear it again at the next meeting. Um, I could get in touch with the applicant, or you know, if you have questions that you'd like to ask them, I can say, hey, can you be present at the next meeting? That's something that.
I think that makes most sense, how I want them to have a little feedback here too in the process because.
If if there was to be a condition that they couldn't enclose this new structure. That is consistent with what they've presented. Okay, so it wouldn't be reducing what they're asking for, right?
Just limit them to the ask.
Right, yeah. So in that regard.
It looks like it was twelve by twelve.
That's what it looked like, I didn't measure the deck, but. Yeah.
It looked like they were keeping their existing concrete slab, like it was within.
It seemed like they were just looking to kind of keep that footprint of covered, but that's my impression.
Yeah, that's what it looks like, it's.
That I don't know. I wouldn't think so. It may come close to the tree.
Their handwritten notes on their plans say deck slash roof over existing patio. But they don't have the dimensions on there.
I was just looking at this, this plan right here that shows the outline of the patio and everything new within it. You know, within that border, so it's not beyond it.
And we could limit it to. We could limit the size to what's represented, the twelve feet. Okay. Well, I will. I will revise my earlier comment about my comfort level of imposing conditions, um. When the applicant is at present, in light of the fact that I think at least what we've been talking about so far. Is consistent with what they have requested. If we get to the point of conditions.
Yeah, it just says the the application is to construct a roof over a deck patio.
Now, if they did not attach it to the home, would that change the whole picture?
Yeah, it would, the building code requires accessory buildings to be at least ten feet from a primary structure, so if it weren't attached, I think, yeah.
So yes, I. Motion approved or motion to approve, it sounds like to me, maybe Ms. Morgan is on the pathway to. Thinking that is, it makes more sense, uh, to, I think, uh, with that request, I thought that would be, I thought I read about the enclosure not being. Part of this, so that was just clarified at the end of the staff comments. As maybe just an additional limiting factor to make sure that it didn't happen. I I was reading it too, that it might be enclosed originally, uh, but it doesn't look like that was the applicant applicant's uh goal.
Like you said, the problem was the concrete foundation, not the enclosure or not. Like they could go up with it, you said, technically, because it's no found, they're gonna build a foundation.
I think that the that the context of that was if we were to approve this variance request. Without putting a restriction on it, then essentially the home now has that. Um, Mr. Chair, I think I can attempt to craft a motion here, taking all of this into consideration. Uh, I would move to approve the variance request um under section thirty-eight dash seventy. Finding that the request meets the following standards, number one, that strict compliance with the zoning ordinance. Regulating the minimum area, yard setbacks, frontage, height, bulk or density or other regulation would render conformity with the restrictions of the zoning ordinance. Unnecessarily burdensome. Under this factor, um, taking into consideration the positioning of the house on the property. And the fact that there is an existing non-conforming rear yard um is um burdensome to the property owner. And does render conformity with the zoning ordinance restrictions unnecessarily burdensome. Factor number two, that granting the requested variance would do substantial justice to the applicant as well as to other property owners in the zoning district. Um, under this factor, granting the requested variance does justice to the property owner. Um, as it allows them to utilize the property uh in the manner they described in their application. And does not harm others in the zoning district as evidenced by the fact that we have not received any correspondence and opposition to this request. And no one is present here to speak against it, um. Under the standard, we can consider whether a lesser relaxation would offer substantial relief. But in this case, it appears that a request for a twelve by twelve deck is relatively small uh to begin with. So I don't believe that a lesser relaxation um would be reasonable in this case. Factor number three, that the plight of the property owner applicant is due to the unique circumstances of the property and not due to general conditions of the zoning district. Um, again, under this factor, the um plight of the applicant is a result of the location of the home. In relation to the rear property line, in this case, which is um an existing non-conforming rear setback. For that reason, the standard may be met. And finally, that the practical difficulties alleged are not self-created. This is an existing home with an existing non-conforming condition uh that was not self-created by this applicant. And therefore, the standard can be met. So my motion is to approve for those reasons, but subject to the following conditions. That this is to be an open unenclosed structure. That the a roof and structural supports are permitted within this reduced setback. But that no walls, screens, glass, or other form of enclosure are permitted. Um, condition number two, that the structure have a maximum width of twelve feet. Um, as shown on the plans presented by the applicant.
Great. We have support. Take a roll call on that, please.
Mr. Sir.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, it's your age.
Yes, yes.
Our next item is public area number four. And Mika, could you introduce us to that one?
The applicant lives at three ninety Big Bay Drive in the R three zoning district. Um, they replacing their deck and um their prior deck was built within the setback. Uh, they'd also, they'd like, they they're rebuilding the deck, would like. To have the deck also be within the setback again with a railing similar to what the walkway situation was. Um, it's about seven feet from the property line as opposed to the required ten feet. Um, decks are tricky and it's i- interesting that you have two of them on your agenda. Normally, when I get a deck, it's not uncommon for a deck to come onto my desk that doesn't meet requirements of all kinds. People very often don't pull permits for decks, so they might be thinking they can replace a deck that's not conforming at all. Some of the um regulations have changed. Uh, and when typically, if you're doing something to a house, you know, you might be changing the siding, you might be changing out a window. With a deck, you're removing the entire thing, when you're removing the entire thing, then the existing non-conformity no longer exists. And so you you're kind of starting from scratch, so they're trying to rebuild a portion of their deck, it's within the setback. Um, and so they're asking for relief from that side setback uh required.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I guess we'll we can open it up to public discussion, if there's anyone in the audience who wants to speak to the side, please.
I'm Amanda Fry, I'm the homeowner, um. Um, and the deck is built um as permitted. And really, all we want is the railing. That's it, um, the previous deck was. Very old and rotten, and there was no hope to make it make it work. So we had it removed, we um hired Green Shield to come up and put a composite deck up. Which is smaller than the old deck, um, came in all sides, including um from the front. And um, we want a railing for the deck, the old deck had a railing and um it. Is a safety issue in my opinion, and um it would also help to keep the the dog on the deck. Um, so. That's why I'm here.
So it is smaller, you're saying?
It is much. Yeah. Um, it's also up to code, which the old deck was not, we discovered when they ripped it out. So, um, yes, it is much smaller.
Great, thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak for or against?
Uh, my name is Ray Peters, I work for Green Shield Deck Builders, um, for the ones that installed the deck. So with uh what she was saying, we did build it, um, we tried to get as much into that setback as possible. Um, so we did reduce the deck um about three to four feet. Um, from what her previous one was, um, I know that she wanted this railing um for her dogs, so she could let them out and they could go into the backyard. Um, but also put a gate at the top of her stairs, um, as to not let the dogs obviously run out into the street. Um. As Mika had stated, unfortunately setbacks change over time. Um, and so by ripping out the existing one, um, there was just no way to get this deck within the setbacks that are required. Um, so that she could have her railing, um, it is slightly under the thirty inches. Um, so by code it is not required, but there are some areas where they are, it obviously dips and things like that. Um, that is uh. Really close to that thirty inches, um, which is another reason that we are proposing to have the railing. Um, and then also with her stairs, I know that we had to install railing on the stairs as um the grade changes. She ended up having four rises, um, so by code, um, the railing was required, so now she has railing on the stairs. But she would just like it to go around, um, the railing that we would install, um, is very aesthetically pleasing. Um, there's multiple options, I know that was one thing that uh Morgan had stated with the first case. Um, is the aesthetics of it, so we do try to do so much aesthetic pleasing railing as possible. As to not obstruct the view and things like that. And I do have copies of the different types of railing, if you guys would like to go over those as well.
Okay. Thank you. I think we've got uh. One letter that was in support for this.
Two.
Two letters?
I have one from Dykstra and one from Avery. It's like maybe an email. But both.
Both are in support.
Yeah, both noted, they agreed with the applicant that it was a safety issue.
Okay. Well, if there's no other comments for the public, we'll close public discussion and wrap the board discussion.
Mr. Chair, I have a question, does the ordinance address um how opaque? The railing is, this is in the front yard, right, or you can see it from the front essentially, right, the front of the home, so. Um, I, is it? Do you think it will be similar, are you planning to do something similar to what your last railing was with the vertical?
Yes, and actually, the there's railing there now on the stairs, and ideally, it would be.
Continue that, okay.
But just to be clear, the railing is necessary because of the great issues, or is it because of?
Not to my knowledge.
It's just for the corralling of.
Right, it's it's under thirty inches, so, and I haven't heard from the building inspector that he's requiring a railing. So from my understanding, this is just the desire of the homeowner to have the railing like they had before.
Okay, okay.
I went out there today and actually looked at it, and I got caught by the homeowner, so I talked to her. But uh, I agree, it's all about a safety issue, and there might be certain areas that are a little bit over the thirty inches. But I think overall, it's a safety issue and will be a good one.
Just for the inconsistencies that.
Correct.
Exists on the outside.
Right, yep. Cause there is an area on the other side that they don't need it, but it'll be consistent if they.
Yeah, can I get out to this one?
It doesn't appear that anyone can really see this railing much. Can they visually see it?
Oh, yeah, neighbors on the sides and across the street from us could see it, but. Really, the only, I think the only person that will be impacted by it will be me, because I'm so short that when I sit on the deck, I can't see over the railing.
Sure.
But, other than that, I don't think anybody else is gonna be impacted visually by it, so.
I get it, I have that same problem.
In this case, it's different than the first one. I don't, I don't know if you're familiar with the property we were discussing.
Yeah, I wasn't saying, maybe if you were looking for something that's so just faulty.
Yeah.
Like we try to do as much as possible. Cause I know people, especially in the population.
Yeah.
Obviously, looking at the less construction.
Well, and I appreciate you bringing that up and understanding that that was a concern we may have, so thank you.
But it sounds like you got some liberty to do kind of what you want with that railing, if, does it have to really conform to be compliant for a guard rail or anything like that, right? So, if it's not needed.
Yeah, I don't know what the building inspector would require for that. It might, yeah, I don't know. I don't want to speak for him, I'll put my foot in my mouth.
No. Typically, if you wanted to put it in, um, they like it to be to call these less important between the several studies, etc. So that's what the proposal was, essentially, is to meet all those criteria. Okay.
How many risers do you have there? Is there more than three? There, so it would require a restful handrail, okay.
That's what's kind of nice about the random we're proposing is the process that's going to go. It's all this continues, but. Well, board, I guess it's up to us to create a motion to, once we get more discussion.
Um, I guess I just have a question. Is this, is there any concern just given the applications that you see on a regular basis, that this would create some new precedent where, I mean, do you see this type of requests? Often?
Well, I do. So typically, I talk to a lot of people about decks, and most often, they don't want to go to the D B A for their deck, so they'll just change the design. Um, the deck ordinance is one that's on my list to be rewritten. I don't think it's clear enough, and I think that there are a lot of restrictions that are just making people jump through hoops that are probably not necessary. So I wouldn't be overly concerned about that, just because I'm hoping that it will be reviewed within the next year or two.
Okay, that's helpful, thank you.
Does it, does it make any sense that for, uh, like, uh, the clarification or qualification of this at the end of this, that there is, this is strictly like something being, wanting to be done by the owner and not really a code requirement? That if a future owner has this place, if they could take it off and still be compliant? Or something, I mean, does that make any?
I think that would be hard for us to put in there, because the building code changes between now and then, we could be creating an inconsistency somewhere. So I don't think, if we were to approve it, I don't think it would prevent someone from investigating that later if they wanted to try to modify or eliminate it, but they would have to, it should be on them at that time to comply, probably, rather than try to speculate.
And this is the year of the building code change, so there will be changes on them, yeah.
Yeah.
I just.
Yeah.
Yeah, where it's not needed to be built.
Right, right. But there is a year following code of.
Yep, it's gonna be a line to comply. Belt and suspension.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I can make a motion, are we ready to entertain a motion?
I think we are.
Second.
Well, I have to make the motion. I'll try to read quickly. Okay, I moved to approve the variance request under section thirty-eight dash seventy of the Township Code of Ordinances, finding that the standards are met as follows. One, that strict compliance with the zoning ordinance regulating the minimum area, yard setbacks, frontage, height, bulk, or density, or other regulation would render conformity with those restrictions of the zoning ordinance unnecessarily burdensome. In this case, um, disallowing the railing in the side yard setback where one previously existed is burdensome to the homeowner and, uh, creates a safety hazard, um, on this permitted deck. Number two, that granting the requested variance would do substantial justice to the applicant as well as to other property owners in the zoning district. In this case, the requested variance is relatively minimal. It also represents a continuation of an existing condition that does not appear to have been found objectionable, um, as evidenced by the two letters we received in support of the application, uh, echoing the applicant's comments about the, uh, safety issue, continuation of, of a railing that was previously existing for years. Number three, that the plight of the property owner is due to the unique circumstances of the property and not due to general conditions of the zoning district. In this case, the parcel is an odd shape, um, that narrows in the center with the property line on the side yard in question angling toward the house, which changes the space that the property owner has to work with alongside the house. Um, I would also note that the property owner has indicated that the new deck was built in an attempt to bring it more into conformance, um, and, uh, in doing so, is, is working with the unique, the uniqueness of the property, um, but is still burdened by that. Finally, that the practical difficulties alleged are not self-created. In this case, the property and the home have existed in their current state for decades, uh, including the railing that was existing on the previous deck for these reasons, um, I believe all of the standards have been met.
Okay. What you were alluding to about being in more compliance, you're talking about the size being smaller?
Correct.
And the, okay, just wondering if we should state that or? Yeah, whatever. I don't know. Does it make sense that it's being smaller and it makes? I didn't know what it meant when you said in more compliance, I just thought it was the railing being there when it's not needed, or?
Well, the, the request for the variance is based on the fact that a portion of the deck is closer to the side lot line than what we would allow, right? So, but they, they did, had they built it on the same footprint, we'd be looking at a railing that extends even further into the setback. So my comment, just to clarify it, was to indicate that in building the deck in an attempt to not encroach as close to the side yard setback, there's lesser amount of railing, essentially. Long way of saying that, um, it's, uh, correct, yes, correct.
Got it. Thanks. Do I have support?
Yes.
Support? Okay. We got our support. We'll take a roll call on that.
Mr. E.
Yes.
Mr. Scannell.
Yes.
Ms. Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Or Chair?
Yes. Alright, you got your hands. Thank you. Okay, um. So we're down to public comments. So if there's anyone in the tonight's audience that'd like to. Address this in any way? No? Yes?
There you go, Chair, you've. Chair Clark, the people who know me from the Board of Trustees and Planning Commission meeting, no, I can't go without not speaking. It's just a general question, um, it's a thought for you to ponder, because, um, obviously, you're not supposed to answer back to me. But, um, as I sit in, like, the last three years, a lot of meetings and decisions are being made. I'm just so curious, because I've had conversations with residents lately, um, that they don't understand the follow-up. Like, um, for example, we've got this tree ordinance, and we don't want to destroy trees that don't need to be destroyed when a building is going up, and, um, a determination is made. Who follows up on that? Who makes sure that what you guys and the planning commission and the board decide actually happens? And that something isn't, not that people are sneaky, but things happen. And I, I, I just don't know what the follow-up is with the township and making sure that the decisions that are made are actually followed. It's just food for thought. Thank you.
Thank you.
I can't answer that.
You can?
Yeah. Well, I mean, I'm the only one here, so. I don't think that we're, it's gonna run until eight. Usually, that's me or code enforcement. Sometimes the building official, it just depends on what the project is. So, um, yeah, once they approve it for zoning, then the building official ensures that it's built to plan. Uh, if there's any issue with that, then a stop work order is issued, we follow up on that. Um, code enforcement is an open position right now, so, yeah, no, no. Um, so, but typically, the code enforcement officer will be following up on some of those things too. And then for things that go through planning commission, then that's something that I'm typically watching as they start to go through their process, checking in with the engineers, doing site visits, those sorts of things.
That's perfect. Um, maybe we can put that in one of the newsletters.
So.
Good idea. Thank you.
Well, with the appeals process, if you're open to be here, I'm guessing we rely on neighbors too. They call me down, make a comment before it's even done. And I think we will listen to neighbors a lot, and they can, railings and setbacks and things like that. As far as the big major stuff that.
Certainly brings awareness. Brings it front of, Mika, to bring it front of us. So. Okay, um, seeing no other participants, I think we'll close public comment. It looks like our next meeting is gonna happen, Mika, in April?
It is going to happen, April eighth, we have two applications.
Two. All right. With that, a motion to adjourn?
I moved.
Meeting adjourned, right?
All in favor.
All in favor, sorry. Everybody's in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, meeting adjourned, everybody.